Okay.
I don't do that.
Calling the regular town board meeting on May 23 to order. As you can tell, my Liz was Spinzia, she's away. Alan Sharon is the deputy town supervisor. So I'll be providing tonight. First we'll do the pledge. Then we do the approval of prior minutes. Somebody move.
I move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. I now move to go through executive session for a brief meeting with persons to discuss matters leading to the appointment of this person to one of our committees. Do you want a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, good. We'll be back in about five minutes. Okay, we're back in session. Any announcements? Go ahead.
Okay. Just a reminder that this Wednesday is grievance day and that if you have an assessment problem you might deal with, just go to the Board Assessment Review. They're gonna meet at 10 to 12, 2 to 4, and 6 to 8 o'clock. And there's a little form that you can fill out. And just bring it to them and fill it out. So it's not Tuesday, it's usually, it's gonna be this Wednesday, okay? And the other item I had was just a reminder, maybe they know about it, there are part-time town jobs available. And you can look them up on the website, rhinebeck-ashley.org. And there are payroll, part-time job, payroll clerk, bookkeeping clerk, part-time, part-time planning board clerk, and a part-time zoning. These are all available. And all the positions are listed there and it shows you what duties you might have. So take a look at that, just go on the website, okay?
Good. The line, maybe?
Just the usual. I'm going to be talking about this until it's passed, which is the Rhine Cliff Waterfront Day, scheduled for June 11 at the Rhine Cliff Waterfront from 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. We have a lot of really wonderful merchants and artisans that are going to be selling their handmade crafts and other things. We also will have food. We have a shuttle service from the Highway Department where people can park if they want a carpool and come down to the river because the parking is limited down there. So it's gonna be a really fun event, we're looking forward to it. We have the Rhine Cliff Water Taxi coming this year, ferrying people back and forth to the, from Rondown back to Kingston, and also offering some tours of the river for just $5 for 20-minute tours. It's a very community-friendly, family-friendly, pocketbook-friendly event. So I hope you guys can come out and enjoy it with us. We're having a lot of fun, come out here.
Aye, Joanna? Okay. Next, I'm gonna open a public hearing on a local law permitting the town to award purchase contracts pursuant to general municipal law section 103, sub-1, on the basis of best value. This is basically a change in the law so that we comply with the state laws on procurement. The details of the local law haven't been done, so if there are any public comments, we'll take them now. We'll adjourn the public hearing until next meeting when we'll have the text so people can comment further. Does anybody have a comment at this time? And so I'll move to adjourn the public hearing until next meeting. Do you need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, the next is a presentation on affordable housing.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Jonathan Menchon, the co-chair of the Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee. And I'm here tonight to make a request for the town board to authorize out of a fund that was created through the Gardens Project, the money for us to hire a consultant to better analyze the town's affordable housing needs. And we're recommending that we work with a group called Patent for Progress, which is a nonprofit itself that specializes way in this area. But the need that we see is to really understand what type of housing is available for whom and what kind of different income level and for what kind of different profile. There's a lot of anecdotal evidence that we're aware of and certainly some particular needs that have been demonstrated. But we're trying to get our hands around, if we are to propose projects moving forward, one or multiple, or however the best way to receive it looks to be, we want to really be able to articulate who we're building or could be building some of these projects for. Are we looking at families, are we looking at seniors? What size unit should we be considering and what kind of income levels should we be targeting? And some of this cycles back also into state programs and refinancing available on the state level. So we want to try to bring all this together. We've had a number of meetings recently with a number of different state officials that basically oversee a number of these different things. And it's made us aware that we should probably have our hands around it. And we interviewed, we actually put in our, not in RFP officially, but essentially an RFP after about five different firms, two of them weren't interested. We had detailed discussions with really two of the remaining three. We got two more detailed proposals, and of those two, the recommendation from the committee is to have a patent for progress.
Okay. Joe, are you gonna put a resolution into that?
Yes, it's number six. And the committee is asking for $17,500 total. And there is a proposal in fact, right, of resolution for step payments. And the committee is very comfortable with this proposal and step payments, and as I say, we have the money. So if you want to take it out of order, I would...
Let's do it.
...propose that we adopt this resolution to hire a patent for progress and authorize the supervisor to sign the attached proposal, and the money transfers are passed item at resolution.
Good. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Now Alan, if Jonathan can continue for just a couple minutes on the last item is a discussion item, so he doesn't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. He doesn't want to, I see other members in the Affordable Housing Committee to talk about the discussion about rezoning around the transfer station to include affordable housing. Jonathan, did you have comments? I do have comments here from Chris Lipscomb, who is the co-chair with Jonathan. I don't know if you want to have a full discussion, but maybe Jonathan can give his comments.
Sure.
And then we can decide.
Yeah, just briefly, we just became aware of this a couple of weeks ago. We talked about it at the last committee meeting. And the concern that we had is just that location, given the lack of infrastructure and then also the distance to town services and transportation, whether it really is... And we've been looking at all those things, sort of looking at the affordable housing. It doesn't really fall into the category that we've been envisioning. And I know that this is just as only designation to say that it's allowed, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen.
Yes.
But from our perspective, it seems like there are probably many better locations for it. And Chris has wrote an email that goes into more detail. I won't try to say now what he's gonna say than written before him then. But the other concern that the committee, one was Sally, that's relevant, the committee had, was adding what would be a much higher level of density to an area that's relatively low density in all the surrounding sections. So these were all things that we just discussed at the last meeting, and since you guys are discussing it tonight, we want to just break this concern.
Okay, everyone, when the law comes up, we can modify it.
Well, it's, why don't we hold on to the end? I do have more discussion on it. And if any of the committee members want to stay, they can certainly make comments. Hopefully, I mean, it won't be too long, but we can let Jonathan go.
Thank you.
Good. Alright, thank you. Any committee reports? Okay. Let's go on to resolutions. I move that we adopt resolution 2016143, preliminary accounts payable abstract 5B, return checks for $72,118. Hours and 77. Second, thank you. Any, anything anybody wants to say about this? Need a second? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? So moved. I move that we pass resolution 2016144, capital of project abstract four checks for Any discussion? All, oh, I, somebody second? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain on that because one of the items involves the Thompson Masarala Park.
The votes, three, one abstention, and one absent. Passes. I move for resolution 2016145, budget transfers. This is basically some small budget transfers to make the works work out, totaling $270 for one and $100 for the other. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. I move for resolution 2016146, town hall use application from the Museum of Rhine Beck History. They want to be able to use the town hall for a harvest auction on October 22 of this year. And this is to approve the application, you have your votes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have two seconds. Any discussion?
Seems like a really neat thing. What's, where do they go for the auction, literally, harvest? Or they're just, as if they're calling it their auction already?
For the nonprofit. It's basically fundraising, I had no idea it was their auction. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, I move for resolution 2016147, grant applications to Burgess County for municipal shared services grants. This is basically at the request of the Highway Superintendent to apply for three grants in conjunction with other municipalities to fund the purchase of a jetback, a boom mower, and a skid steer trailer.
And we would be the lead on the jetback, and we would just depart to the others.
Okay. Any other discussion? Point?
Second.
Who has a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion was voted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. We did the next one over. Resolution 2016149, appointment to the Recreation Committee, I move that to retable this.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. The reason for retabling this will come, become apparent later. Okay, I move for resolution 2016150, Recreation Department hire for 2016. This is hiring an individual to be a counselor in the summer camp. This was recommended by the Recreation Director. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 2016151, I'll move for that. Printer for Building Department and zoning enforcement office, there's a 40-year-old printer that's broken and it's gonna cost more to repair than it's worth. And this is for a new printer and supplies.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or she carries, sorry. Okay, this is, this is the discussion item. So I have a question, when does the city overlay zoning come up for a vote?
Well, we would have to do a local law, so we're not there yet. It's just a discussion. If you want to discuss it now, we heard Jonathan Menchon say it's really not a good idea to include affordable housing as part of the site, it's really not good. A number of years ago, before I became a lawyer, the committee rejected the use of that site. I have a communication from the co-chair, Chris Lipscomb. Happy to read it. I understand there's a discussion, and it's to the supervisor and members of the town board to circulate it. After, I understand there's to be a discussion tonight at town board meeting regarding rezoning of land comprising the civic zone at the landfill and the transfer sites, and that one of the expanded allowable uses of the site under consideration is for development of affordable housing in addition to use useful solar farm and a cell tower. I would like to voice my opposition to any consideration for use of land for affordable housing. I serve as a co-chairman of the Rhine Beck Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee a number of years ago. The committee studied the land in question as a possible site for affordable housing, and we were left unconvinced of its suitability for the purpose. This was due to a number of factors, including its lack of proximity to the village center or any municipal center to that matter, a lack of transportation infrastructure such as bus routes, lack of infrastructure such as municipal water and sewer, as well as physical characteristics of land. In addition to the foresaid site, the uniformer landfill adjacent to such would be subject to federal as well as state law, such as the Resource Recovery, Conservation Recovery Act, particularly the Title D, and importantly, the Brown Fields Act, which refers to the sites that are real property, the expansion and development of which use may be complicated by presence of, and potential presence of hazardous substance pollutants and et cetera. These sites, a number of statutes, in my opinion, land is much more suited for consideration for use such as a municipal solar farm, which would contribute substantially to lowering living costs to all residents of the town, and thus would provide a measure of housing affordability across the board. Affordable housing is just thrown in this, really without any discussion with the Affordable Housing Committee, so this is to actually take the housing out of the transfer area site, right? It's not... Yes, yes, and keep it for solar farm, for cell tower, if lawyers want to come up with another use. It could be the wind farm facility. I don't know if it's even suitable for a ball field, but this is to take it out of consideration.
Do we have to vote on that now?
No, it's the discussion, I think we can give the sense back to the supervisor and the lawyers, and hopefully the board, or those members of the board who are here, do not believe that affordable housing should stay as part of the use...
Well, I certainly agree. Yes, I think you have an agreement of those of us who are here. John, did we get an update to the local law from Warren?
Which one?
Recreation?
The recreation one?
Yeah, just the original, whatever.
And the park, there's two of them, one for the park, one for recreation.
No, no updates?
No updates, no. We could probably dig it out. So we're gonna, we're gonna move to new business. So both of these are new business, since the people from the partnership of, whatever, I forget what it's called now.
The田园场地 partnership.
There you go. Right here. There is a resolution which, we have time, we'll have time for later if we can agree on what to do, that basically sets up the ability for the field partnership, the Rhine Beck Field Partnership, to do the work on the fields, to get the fields seeded and ready to be used in a year or so, whenever the seeds grow into grass that can be used for playing. In order to make that happen, there has to be an engineering study to look at the drainage and whether the drainage is gonna be okay, since the original design had an astroturf field for the soccer field, which no longer, which nobody wants anymore, but the fact is the engineering was done for the astroturf, not for a grass field. And so the first item of business is to do the engineering study and make sure that the drainage in the park works with a sod field rather than an astroturf field. And that's, and the partnership has agreed to front the money to do that, and then carry on and do the rest of the work. There are two issues as far as I can tell. One of them is that the partnership would like to do this and not be under the park committee.
Well, I'd like to clarify.
You can clarify that.
So, good evening, Roger Kwan, representing the Rhine Beck Soccer League and the Rhine Beck Field Partnership. So, the last town board meeting, we took the, we offered to give the town our time, treasure the town, to realize a significant part of the park mission. So specifically, the athletic fields, so designated in town plan, as well as the great lawn. We only want to realize the town's plan. So, our journey in this path has lasted well over a year now, and we're just looking to make this happen. So what we'd like to do, and we recommend, is that the town board grant our, our community groups, these not-for-profit, youth-oriented groups, the ability to work directly with the planning boards and all through the proper channels and town code to plan and execute this part of the park. Any hands, any quick work? We're ready to do that, and we're looking forward to the town board supporting this initiative.
Is that the only thing? I mean, we've had a bunch of P emails, is that, is that all you've got there?
We want to be the town board, to give us agency to work directly with the planning board. We're happy to take the advisement and work with the Thompson Masarala Park Committee, but we have a very vested interest in making sure that this part of the park is realized in timely fashion. I'm sure the town board realizes that we have not moved as quickly as we'd hoped since our initial meeting in October. We had done that with anticipation and expectation that we could be planting seed in the fall, as typically done for most field projects.
Yeah, my position on this has been that I don't want another independent entity planting things in the park, that it should go through the park committee, which, by the way, has representatives not only from the town, but the village, the library, and school board. And I'm not willing to, to deal with any issues that come up between the two entities. I'd rather have it all go through one. I'm not gonna play so diplomatic.
We're not asking you to play so diplomatic.
Well, yeah, but that's what it could come down to if there's an issue. And then, by the way, there are no issues at the moment to deal with, so, I mean, and since, in my opinion, any party to this agreement can back out at any moment, if you don't like what goes on, you can always back out. So, I don't understand what the issue is. Why not let the park committee do its job, which is to oversee construction in the park?
So we can go through that history, right?
I want to go through, well, you can go through this, or you can say anything you want, but...
Why don't you tell us the history then?
Why can't you work with the park committee? And if there's any disagreement between the partnership and the committee, come to the town board and we'll resolve it.
I think we've been down that path.
Well, when you say you've been down it, I believe me, I don't remember you being down that path.
Because we were working with the park committee. So, in April, we first approached the park committee and the town board, suggesting that the artificial turfs were not needed, they would cost on the order of half million dollars. We recommended grass fields, that was consistent with, you know, the green, open space character of Rhine Beck. So for a savings from $400,000 for a $4,000 engineering study, I thought that was good value that the sports community, Little League, lacrosse, and soccer offered. Throughout the summer, we asked questions through the park committee on how we can move to the next stage. And the park committee was very preoccupied with the infrastructure. We're very excited about the infrastructure. By October, we discovered that we had the opportunity, oh, well, we can gift our time and service and money to the town to realize the planting of the fields for both the great lawn and the athletic fields. So beyond our active recreation into the passive recreation for the town. We were assured that the park committee would work with us to go through the planning board process, and that lasted beyond a reasonable timeframe. I believe there's a history of correspondence on that. So unfortunately, we'll copy you in all future correspondence, Mr. Gell. By January, we were again asking town representatives to help us work with the park committee just to meet the engineer. We were unable to meet the engineer. By March, we had volunteered to pay for the engineer's time, as well as field specialists to understand what was gating the development of that field gift. So that's how we've come to realize that there needed to be a revision of the stormwater pollution protection plan. All of this could have been discovered or discussed well early last year. So now you're moving forward, very excited to move forward with the pavilion. On April 25th, I understand from watching the Panda videos, that there was no will in the town board to fund this stormwater protection pollution plan. So we took it upon ourselves at the next town board meeting to volunteer our time, again, our material, our treasure, the talent, to make this happen. So that's how we got there.
It seems, it seems to me that until you know the outcome of that $4,000 study, we really don't know what we're up against. If the, let me finish. If the study shows we don't have to do any additional engineering work to make the drainage work, then all you guys are gonna do basically is level and seed the fields. Yes?
You kind of casually say that just level and sap, it seems like it's throwing grass, like John Appleseed or something. It's a significant effort.
Of course, because it's a huge field.
Yes.
But there's, there's, you don't have to redesign drainage if the engineering study is, comes out positive. You don't have to regrade the fields to make the drainage work after the redesign is done, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, if the engineering study says everything is good, then in effect, you can use the current contours of the fields.
You're absolutely right, and we want to make sure that these fields are developed and built in timely fashion.
Of course, but, so why don't we just do the engineering study and then we'll know that we can go ahead wackily, the planning board doesn't...
Why don't you accept our offer and let us go all the way? Why, why don't you accept our offer and let us go all the way? Build a great park to accompany the pavilion.
I tell you what, because I'm just me talking at the board, obviously. I'd be willing to let you go ahead and do that, and if the engineering study is negatives, then come back and we'll figure out how we're going to deal with that.
What does that mean?
That means that if the engineering study says you need to redesign the drainage, then the committee has to be involved.
And why would that be?
Because it's going to impact the roads, the parking lots, and everything else.
We will, we pledged in our last meeting that we would design the engineering consistent with the park plans. And we would be happy to work with the park committee and inform them of where things are.
I'm, I'm, I'm totally against having a separate entity do that. Totally against.
So, that's fine. I'll tell you what, we'll do the lead as the planning for the park fields. If you're not willing to take us up on that offer, that's your call.
Oh, I'm, I'm very willing.
But I'd be happy to invite public comment over the next two weeks. We can come back and revisit this in two weeks' time.
Yeah, but the, the issue is not whether you can do the work and not whether it ought to happen. It's how we're going to manage this. And I'm personally not willing to manage the relationship between the two entities.
Well, any town board member can manage if they want to volunteer.
Really find somebody to do it.
Okay. Is there any town board member willing to work with the field committee, field partnership to realize the fields at the park without a burden on the taxpayers?
I guess what is confusing me, are you saying you don't want to work with the committee that's been working on this park for six years? And, you know, if there's a dispute, come to the board. You want to supplant them in terms of?
We only want to realize very specific parts of the park.
That I just finished. You want to supplant them in the development of the fields? It seems to me that, I don't understand why you can't work together. And if there is a dispute or you think they're not moving fast enough, come back to us and we'll resolve the issue.
The other thing is, if you want to go around that board, you're going to have to get an agreement, not only from us, but from the village board, the library board, and school board.
Okay.
But, and you're not going to get it from, at least from me.
Okay.
You know, it seems like the, the most likely outcome of this is the engineering study will say, no big deal for the drainage. It works. And then we can go ahead and see the fields and do the minimal amount of grading that has to happen. Why don't we wait until that happens?
Again, we've been patient for over a year. We just really want to see the fields for the kids to play on.
Okay.
And you don't want to commit $4,000 for this engineering study. That's why we stepped forward.
Well, good. We appreciate that.
Doesn't sound like it.
So we're all in agreement, we ought to accept the $4,000. And due to the study, I guess what's giving us some pause is the implication that you're going to cut out the park committee from this, and they have to be involved.
The park committee is welcome to participate in our committee.
Well, you're, you're on the park committee, so you're welcome to participate with the park committee.
Have you been to those park committee meetings?
I, I have. I'm the liaison from the town board for the park committee.
You think they're working?
Well, they, they have accomplished quite a bit, haven't they?
Have they published any minutes?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's working?
What's your point?
Point is, the committee is not working in a timely fashion for the park.
That's your opinion, so.
Yes.
So if we, you saw a draft of a change to the resolution that basically says you got to work through the committee.
It also said we need to grant money to the town.
Well, well, let me finish. It's also, you know, let me, what it said was, what it would say is that if one of the entities drops out and has raised money for the town parks, that that money should go back to the town.
That's a decision between the donor and the town, not the park.
Well, then have, have the donations be made for unspecified. But if they come in for the purposes of a field in the town park and the, and the party to, that collected it withdraws from the agreement, then the town should get the money because it was given to, to work in the town park. If it was given for some unspecified reason, keep it.
Right. So we would, we would specify and recommend to the donors, they have the right to make a donation to realize field space in Rhinebeck. Ideally, the park is that place. We'd love to work with the town to realize that vision.
As long as people understand that, I'm fine.
Right. Just like the park fund flyer last year. Had a nice green soccer field on it.
What is, what, what's your point?
My point is, do you have the same expectations for the park fund?
Yeah, that it will be spent for the park, managed by the, the park committee.
No, it's managed by the park fund, which is a separate 501(c)(3) entity.
Okay, that, yeah, that's okay for me. That's not, that's not the town's money.
Frankly, I donated money to that 501(c)(3). And I would be horrified if my money did not go to the park. That was the reason I made a contribution to that organization. And if they use that money for some other reason, I, I think it would be terrible. It might amount to fraud, and I may have legal redress. But I gave it because there was this brochure advertising the park, and that's what I thought it would be used for. If your group raises money for fields at the Thompson-Mazurlo Park, the money should be used for that, if that's how you're raising the money.
Okay, so.
So it will be explicit to the public that money is raised will be for field space in Rhinebeck. Ideally, it would be going to the town park.
Fine, long you don't mislead people, I'm fine.
Well, I kind of resent the suggestion that we would try to mislead people.
I don't think Alan was saying that you would mislead people. We just want to, you had raised the point as to why money should go to the fields if one of these members pulls out. And we're just saying why.
Your comments noted, and we would make everyone aware the intended purpose of these funds. And you have the right to withdraw their donation.
So I think we can go one of two directions. One is, we can keep negotiating on what a resolution will look like that covers all eventualities. If this happens, we'll do that. If that happens, we'll do this. Most of which ain't going to happen. Or.
Political will can make it happen, right?
Whatever. I'm not sure what you mean by that, but.
Well, you just have to decide to accept the original resolution. Which we will gladly share with the public.
Well, do you want us to vote on it?
I suggest that we invite public comment over the next two weeks and we can discuss the same.
Fine, I mean, the public's willing, is, is, the public is welcome to comment at any of these meetings on anything.
It's not an agenda item.
There's public comment on non-agenda items is on the agenda. Every week, every meeting.
Okay, well, you said that you would vote on this proposed resolution.
Well, I thought you would agree with it. If you don't agree with it, why should we have the resolution that we know that you don't agree with?
Why doesn't your group actually look at the resolution and see if you really, you really have a problem? I, I don't know if your group really discussed it. I would certainly be interested in exactly what the problems are line by line as to what the problem is with the revised resolution.
What I suggest is that we offer the public visions of both resolutions and we invite public comment. Seems like a Democratic thing to do.
You're welcome to do whatever you want. The fact is, is that there's no resolution in front of the board at the moment. The, you put yours, you can ask, have yours put it in front of the board. We can vote on it, but it's not going to, I don't, well, I don't think it's going to pass. We'll see. The other thing is, the shortcut it seems to me is go through the engineering board and see what the problem is that we're trying to solve and see what it's going to take to solve it.
You basically are asking us to give money, front the money with no, no confidence that we can realize this park.
I'd be willing to, to, to put in a resolution right now that says, if you front the money and the, and the thing is positive, that is to say that no, no redesign needs to occur. You can go ahead and do the work.
Well, they have to do it in connection with the committee, then if we're not passing the committee, that is the problem. I think you know what our position is.
I know what your position is. I know what Mr. Scher's position is. I don't know what the other town board members' positions.
Well, at this meeting, it only takes two to keep you from having what you want.
It's not what I want, it's what the Rhinebeck Soccer League, the lacrosse league, and the baseball league. And, you know, I suggest that we invite the public to, to comment.
Fine, go ahead. Anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Any public comment on any other non-agenda item? Okay, I move to go into an executive session to consider collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law.
Which, which?
Huh?
Which?
Which is what?
Which doing, pardon?
There's only one. Oh, there is. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be back in 10 minutes or so for a full adjournment. There's no other business.